I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education for July 15th, 2024. Roll call, please.
Mr. Booth, Mrs. Marks.
Here.
Mrs. Biffey. Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Here.
Mrs. Havikhorst.
Here.
Mr. Bass.
Here.
The vice president.
We have approval of the minutes from the public hearing of June 10th, 2024, and the regular board meeting of June 10th, 2024. Are there any additions or corrections to either set of minutes?
No.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have future dates.
Yes, it's hard to believe. We are five weeks from the start of school. And so, summer has been busy. It's been quick, but we're getting a lot done. August 12th through the 14th, we're happy to welcome our new staff members in for institute days. And then, the full staff comes on August 19th. So like I said, five weeks from today. And then, students will come on August 21st, two days after the teachers come. And we do have an early dismissal day on the Friday going into Labor Day weekend. But that's it.
Very good. Thank you. Any presentations tonight?
No.
Anyone in the audience come to address the board on any items that are not on tonight's agenda? Come on.
Pull that mic down.
A little vertically challenged. Good evening, everybody. My name is Kimian Krishank Rogers. I am a 153 parent, former employee, lifelong learner. And I wanted to follow up on a statement that I made, I think, a couple months ago now, about racial affinity groups and their power in the district. So I have with me a statement, a statement that I'd like to share with each of you. It was supposed to be one page. It's three. But essentially, it outlines some recommendations that we came up with as a group. Essentially, just a short form would be establishing an affinity group within the district. The second recommendation would be a formal process for interpersonal grievances with an outside third party. And the final recommendation is a certified state evaluator that is not an administrator in the district accompanying administrators in observations to provide another perspective. CSEs are easy to get. They're a little expensive, but worth it. And I believe that there are people in the district that are already qualified to do this. So with that, I just want to hand you the statement. And then, I can provide my contact information if you have further questions.
Great, thank you. Thank you for taking the time to put this together for us.
We appreciate it.
If you just want to head it out, we'll just pass it down.
Yeah, we'll pass it down.
You don't have to go through all that.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else in the audience that has come to address the board on any items that are not on tonight's agenda? Do we have any responses to questions or concerns raised by the audience at previous meetings?
Do not.
Okay. Any board members have any reports on committee meetings or other meetings you have attended?
We had a personnel committee meeting the other day on July 9th. It was brief, but Scott presented us with two, I'm sorry, Dr. McAllister presented us with two agenda items, one of which, which is on for tonight, approving a new position. It's a staffing facilitator, which would really help address the needs of our students while supporting our staff and that they're utilized in their areas of expertise. I'd say more focused than that. So, we have met the high school. Most schools have that. We have not had that here for many years, ever. This would be the first time. So, coming out of that, I think it's a very strong and strongly needed position. So, that's on the agenda for tonight. And then, we had a staffing update. Dr. McAllister gave us really good insight into where we're at in terms of staffing. We're in good position. We're not at 100%, but we're pretty close as of last week. So, I just have to commend, when you talk to other schools and you hear the deficits of positions, that is not the case here. Dr. McAllister has led that, along with our administrators, finding the right people. And our staff have supported that as well. So, right now, we're in good standing, it sounds like.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Any other board members have any reports?
No.
All right. Superintendent's report.
Yes. Well, first of all, I'm excited to welcome two, speaking of staff members, our two new principals to District 153 who were hired a few months ago. But in the back, Ryan Gordon, the new principal at Willow School. And seated next to her, Tara Peacock, who's the new principal at Churchill School. So, when Mr. Schmidt was talking about hiring and staffing, that burden largely falls on our building principals. And so, not only are they new to our district, but they've been thrown in in search of high-quality staff members. So, thanks to both of you and also to Kim Johnson at James Hart, who's not able to be with us this evening. Also, I wanted to talk briefly about property tax bills, subject of discussion throughout our community. And I know with the referendum that there is, at least, an understood perception, I'll call it, that tax bills in this community went up as a result of the referendum. And there's no doubt that as we went through the referendum process a year and a half ago, that we advertised to people, yes, this will increase your taxes, and we stated how much. And that has come to fruition on the most recent round of tax bills. But there was another thing that happened concurrent with that, which was a triennial reassessment in South Cook. And so, you know, I live in a neighboring school district, but my tax bill went up markedly as well. And that was, had nothing to do with the referendum. It's because of the reassessment that happens every three years. So, perhaps you've seen the articles in the Chronicle. We have Marilyn here this evening. There was a great article that they had, talking about how, you know, the process for tax bills starts with the assessor's office, but then it goes to the board of review. And actually, the original set of bills that came out proposed a shift, if you will, to put more of that burden on businesses and less on residential. However, when it went to the, to the board of review, that actually ended up being the reverse. And so, what ended up happening was the local share of your property tax bill, which used to be about 67%, two-thirds, has now climbed to over 70%. And the business share went down a little bit. So, I'm not here to tell you that the referendum did not cause tax bills to go up. It obviously did. However, a much bigger increase was simply due to that reassessment. And if you look at your tax bills, all of you have them, has the 2020 assessment value, and then, right next to it, the 2023 assessment value. And you can see what I am undoubtedly talking about if your tax bill went up. The other thing I'll point out is a public service announcement. Fritz Cagney, the assessor, will be at Homewood Flossmore High School this Saturday morning, I believe, 9:30?
9:00 or 9:30.
Speaking in the auditorium for anybody in the community. Is that time right?
Place is wrong.
Oh, the village auditorium. Okay.
Right.
Okay. Okay. So, he will be in the community. But if you're interested in hearing about this process from the person who actually does it, that would be an excellent opportunity for anybody in the community to attend and to hear directly from the individual who plays a critical role in that process. So, I just wanted to mention that. And then, the other thing I'll point out, if you live over by Churchill School, you've undoubtedly seen the roofing project that's going on this summer. And, you know, the last couple of days, we've had a very, very large amount of rain. We're going to get more rain this evening, which when you're doing a roofing project and you're stripping off roof, those aren't the best combinations. So, thanks to Kevin Keane, our director of operations, came in on Sunday just to look at the building to see how it weathered the storm, literally and figuratively. And, you know, so, the project is coming along. But again, we're down to five weeks. And we've been assured that that project will be done on time. And we're excited to have a new roof at Churchill School. It's desperately needed. And we also have plans at this point to ask for your approval to do the same thing at Willow School next summer. Both roofs are, are at that point where they need to be replaced. But we're on schedule so far despite the weather we've had the last couple of days.
And I want to add to that, without that referendum money, we would still be having buckets on the floor catching the water. So,
Excellent point.
We are very grateful to be able to have roofs that don't leak anymore. And also, Ryan and Tara. See, I caught them talking in the back. Welcome. We're so, we're glad you guys feel comfortable already. No, we're thrilled that you're here. Welcome. Okay, we have several consent agenda items. The first is to authorize the chief school business official to pay the usual and customary bills for August 2024. And the second item is the approval of a lease agreement with Speed for the 2024-2025 school year.
Yes, I'll just mention for the past several years, Speed has leased one of the classrooms at James Hart. They pay a rental fee for that. And then, they have students who represent a variety of Speed member schools. But there's anywhere from five to 10 students in that classroom, along with the teacher and an assistant. And they have been wonderful guests in our building. Some of those students are 153 kids, but most are not. But they have been fantastic since they've started leasing that space, which again, has been at least five years. So, thank you to them. But we're excited to have them back next year.
Great, thank you. Any questions on the lease agreement from the board or the audience? All right. Personnel report.
Yeah, as mentioned earlier, personnel report is very lengthy with a lot of, you know, movement, people leaving, people coming, people being reassigned. So, you can see the specific names in the personnel report.
Any questions on the personnel report?
No.
From the audience? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented in items 7A, 7B, and 7C.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bass?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Havikhorst?
Yes.
Mr. Marks?
Yes. Motion carries. We have action agenda items. The first is the second payment of June 2024 bills and the first payment of July 2024 bills. Are there any questions on the bills?
No.
All right. Is there a motion to approve?
Looked upon the recommendation of the chief business school official that the Board of Education authorize the second payment of June 2024 bills and the first payment of July 2024 bills in an amount not to exceed $6,379,649.53.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Havikhorst?
Yes.
Mr. Bass?
Yes.
Mrs. Marks?
Yes. Motion carries. We have employment.
Yes, so these names that you see here listed are recommended for employment on the certified staff. One of the things I'll point out, it's nice to see some people coming in with less experience than what we've been hiring in the last few years, which is indicative that we have a nice balance of staff members newer to the profession, but also our veterans. But also that there are people entering the profession, right? We don't have anybody on here right out of college, but certainly some, just a handful of years away from college. So, that's nice to see. So, I ask for your recommendation on hiring these individuals. William Gerstner, PE teacher at Churchill, Megan Hills, 5th grade teacher at Churchill, Yessenia Gomez, 6th grade special ed teacher at James Hart, Emily Johnson, 1st grade teacher at Willow, Madeline Lunar, PE teacher at Churchill, Sean Sabatka, health teacher at James Hart, and Bianca Robinson, special ed assistant at Churchill.
Any questions on employment from the audience? Is there a motion to approve?
Moved upon the recommendation of the administration that the Board of Education approve the employment of William Gerstner, Megan Hills, Yessenia Gomez, Emily Johnson, Madeline Lunar, Sean Sabatka, and Bianca Robinson, effective August 19, 2024, upon the terms recommended by the superintendent, conditioned only upon receipt of a satisfactory criminal background report and upon receipt no later than August 1, 2024, of evidence of proper legal qualifications for the position to be filled.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Zimmerman?
That's pretty good. Oh, yes.
Mrs. Havikhorst?
Yes.
Mr. Bass?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Marks?
Yes.
Did you even take a breath? I don't know. You can't put the new person with this guy. I know. I'm well aware of that. Okay, we're going to wait on 8C and move on to discussion items.
Yes, even though we just approved policy changes at our last meeting, press has released the latest version of recommended policy language. So, this is a first reading. I'll ask for your approval at the August board meeting for these policy changes.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any written communication to the board? I have some, but I don't know if you want me to read it now or later. This would, this would be a good time? Yeah, it's a good time. Okay, all right. Okay. So, this is for me. So, dear fellow school board members and Dr. McAllister, administrators, teachers, community members, family members who are here, many of these letters begin with, "I regret to inform you, but mine does not. I am officially resigning my position as a member of Homewood School District 153 School Board as of today, July 15, 2024. I do not regret this decision. I am proud of the service I have given to the school district and the Homewood community for the past 15 years. I've learned from President Marx and all of my fellow board members, including those that aren't here tonight, Broderick and Ashanti. I've also had the pleasure of learning from Dr. McAllister, Dr. Mitchell, Mr. Tom Brabeck, Mr. Greg Lawrence, Mr. Steve Anderson, and the late Mrs. Gail Gallagher. I've had the opportunity to grow and have had experiences I would not have had otherwise. At one of my very first board meetings, we had an executive session to discuss a residency case. I had no idea going into that meeting how heartbreaking it would be. The way I saw it, the child was losing out and being punished due to the actions of their parents, and it seemed so unfair. I put their child, I realize, however, that even though it wasn't the child's fault, it was their parents' bad decision to put their child in a school outside of their own district, and there wasn't anything I could do about that. I knew my obligation was to the residents I represented who paid for our school district to run. And this isn't included, it's an afterthought, but I have, in that meeting and then, in so many others following, shared so much of myself with the members of this board and our superintendents. And they've shared with me. And it's, it's been such a wonderful opportunity to have that trust with all of you. My daughter graduated from James Hart in 2009, just before I joined the board. My son graduated in 2012, and my favorite niece graduated this year. I've had the pleasure of giving diplomas to the children of dear friends and neighbors and countless other amazing kids. I had the opportunity to experience interest-based bargaining negotiations with our teachers, staff, and administrators. I've experienced strategic planning with each of those groups, plus parents and other community members. I've met concerned parents for coffee, taken their phone calls, and responded to their emails. I've worked tirelessly with so many others to pass three referendums for Homewood Schools. And I supported our schools during the COVID-19 pandemic, an event that has likely changed education and all of us forever. I feel like I've taken advantage of every opportunity afforded to me in this role. And I'm ready to resign because I know there are many other people in the district who could bring more to the school board than I can at this point. I would love for one of our younger parents, who is in our schools on a day-to-day basis, to look at, and really seriously consider becoming a member of this board. It is a little tricky, being a board member and having a child in school, but it can be done. Michael is 25, and I don't think he suffered any long-term effects of it. President Marx has done an outstanding job, underscore outstanding job, of keeping politics out of our school board. Every board member I have served with during my tenure has been here for the good of the community and not for the good of themselves. Shelley has been a matchless mentor to me. And I have used what she has taught me, not only as a school board member, but as a professional, as a mother, and as a friend. Thank you, Homewood School District 153, for trusting me with this great responsibility. It has been my honor and my pleasure to serve. I look forward to seeing a new face following in my footsteps and those before me. My very best, always, Deb Havikhorst. Well, we have a few official things to do. But first, we have a resolution to pass. So, all in favor of passing Resolution 71524? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And we'll get to that in a minute. But, no, we'll read the resol, I'll read the resolution first, because you can't read your own resolution.
No, I can't. I refuse to. I did not read it in the package.
Really awkward, right?
Yeah, super awkward.
Okay. Whereas Deb Havikhorst has served the students, families, and staff of Homewood School District 153 honorably, tirelessly, and humbly for 16 years. Whereas Deb Havikhorst operated as if every student was her own child and wanted nothing less than the best opportunities for them. And whereas Deb Havikhorst understood the implicit connection of the school district and the success of its students to the vitality and long-term health of the Homewood community. And whereas Deb Havikhorst has shown her advocacy and dedication to meeting the needs of our most at-risk students by serving with empathy and devotion on the governing board of directors for Speed District 802 for several years. And whereas Deb Havikhorst has epitomized role model in leadership by always being prepared and displaying the highest levels of ethics and morals. And whereas Deb Havikhorst has been an ideal colleague to her fellow board members, frequently mentoring them, being a voice of reason to them, and providing them with the perfect balance of honesty, levity, and knowledge. And whereas, Homewood School District 153 is a better, more caring and nurturing place as a result of her presence on the board. Therefore, be it resolved that Homewood School District 153 Board of Education, Cook County, Illinois recognizes and honors Deb Havikhorst's support to the Homewood Public Schools and the community of Homewood this 15th day of July 2024. Thank you. I'm going to give this to you in a minute, but, you know, we all have some comments to make. Okay. I can't imagine sitting up here without you over there. And one of, when I started thinking about you not being on the board, one of the things that I thought of was how many times you have rescued me when I did not have the right words to someone in the audience who just slayed me. And how I just, I just didn't have it.
That wasn't often, Shelley.
Oh, you always had the right thing to say to people. And it was always done with knowledge and compassion. And that's so important, that people knew that when they came here to our board meetings, they were heard and respected, and that you were able to make them feel as if they were valued, even if we didn't agree with what they were saying. And I really appreciate that you always stepped up and took on that responsibility. And I don't know if you realize that you did that.
Not necessarily.
And I really, and when I was thinking about it, I was like, that, Deb always led, you always led with your heart, but you didn't forget the brain part. But you always led with your heart. And I will miss sitting up here with you, but I am so grateful to you for all of the years that you devoted to our kids and our community. And Pete, it is not easy being the spouse of a board member. I know that. Katie, Katie, it's not, even though you weren't a student here, it's not always easy seeing your mom go to meetings when you may have needed something from her. And we really appreciate the role that you played, along with your sister, brother-in-law, and number-one niece, in helping Deb be a great board member. Because without your support of her, she wouldn't have been able to do the job she did. So, thank you to all of you. Okay, who else has something?
I'm going to follow that.
Sorry.
I'll go while you're thinking, if you want me to.
You say did, I'll go. Let's go ahead.
No, you know, one thing, I guess, you know, when I was reflecting on the time we've been on the board, I mean, it's hard to believe it's been 16 years that you've been on the board. And I think for me, that makes like 13 or 14. So, it's been quite a, quite a, quite a long time, but.
We're not any older, Alex, so that works out.
I mean, I think a couple of things that, that I really appreciate, appreciate our time together is, I think, one of the, one of the first things that comes to my mind is, when I think about things, I tend to be very, very rigid and, you know, not in a bad way, but I guess just in terms of my way of thinking. But I think one of the things that I appreciate, your perspective and everything, whether it's been on finance and property, or educational progress, or any, or even just an executive session or on the board meeting, is you've always, you've softened my point of view on a lot of things in a good way, and helped me take a look at things from a lot of other perspectives. So, which, which I appreciate, because lord knows, I'm not, I'm far from right often. But it definitely helps, has helped me over the years, think about how we look at things, how we, how we work as a board, the decisions we make, and so on. And I think, and you know, I think you alluded to the fact that we're not a political board. We're all here to, to, for the good of the students in the district and the community. And I think you definitely helped me be a better person and do that job more effectively. And I really appreciate all your time and effort and your thoughts and opinions. And I'm going to say levity, I think levity was in, was in the resolution too, but I definitely appreciate that too. It definitely makes some of the more challenging decisions and moments a little easier to, easier, easier to undertake. So, definitely, I'm going to miss you a lot.
Thank you, Alex.
Deb, I'll think of everything I wanted to say as I'm driving home and down the road.
Send me a text.
I'll text you. That's right. A text. You know, but if I had to sum, if I had to sum up our 16 years, you know, just a real representation of servant leadership, right? The giving of herself for others. What more can you ask for from a board member? Tara. Deb, I think of the, the car rides, the conversations.
We solved so many world problems.
We solved so many.
Or we tried.
And we did. You know, when the time called for it, you were here for us individually. And you were here for us as a group. You gave of yourself to the smallest detail, but also to the largest. When, when your goal was the well-being of every student, but also the well-being of the community, and you brought that to the board meeting, you brought that to closed sessions, in many ways, you were, you know, just a, a voice of reason that brought a level of professionalism to it, but also a level of womanly humanity, right? And in today's day and age, that's important, right? You shaped the operation of this board in many ways. You really hit it on the head when you described Shelley. But Shelley also, when she described you, you guys know each other well. So, Deb, I'm going to miss having you on here.
Thanks.
If, if, if anybody can look and say what a board member is or should be, Deb, you can certainly help shape that. And you did. And I just want to thank you.
Thank you.
And wish you the best of luck in the exciting adventures of your future.
Thank you.
So, yeah.
Thank you. And what do you have to say?
So levity was in there. So when I joined the board, first of all, society and the private sector will tell you that anyone in leadership needs to remove empathy, or, you know, not crying for, you know, especially if you're in a minority in a room or whatever. And I realized rather quickly, you are a crier. But it was all in passion, it's the passion that you have and the dedication, not only to doing the right thing for our students, but just doing the right thing. So, you know, I've seen, I would look over there at you, and my goal, when you came over here, is like, I'm going to break, and she's going to laugh, during one of our meetings. And we, we had a breakthrough when someone referenced Fabuloso in the hallways of one of our schools as an aphrodisiac. Do you remember that? In our, our kinship, pure friendship, it was, it was, it was a breakthrough moment for us.
It was. It was. Everything was funny. Did we hear that right?
Did you hear that word?
We did.
Yeah, yeah. And I was like, I got her, here we go, my, the moment of breakthrough. It took too long.
Yeah.
No, but vulnerability, and I think that's also something that I admire, when people can be themselves. You've been authentic in your approach and consistent, and I've seen that other side in closed-door sessions, and I, and I was rooting on you as you kind of sift through your passion, and tears may flow, whatever, and, but the sternness ring ours too, we have to do the right thing. And that, that balance is not only needed from a board, but just needed in our society to kind of sift through everything, so care are we doing the right thing? And I think all of us got even closer during the pandemic through our screen time. And then lastly, you're present, so one of the things, it's one of my pet peeves, when it says, "How's your weekend?" Or, "How are things going?", and then you're already taking off.
Yeah.
You always would ask me, "How are you?", and look at me in my eyes and just like, "No, how are you?". And I appreciate that, and I will miss that. They don't ask me that.
I know.
I've been on the board.
I'm going to talk to them.
Yeah, so.
But they got to take care of Ron for me.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it, because you know, you know, my home situation, it's just, I'm the only guy in the house, and so, no, I appreciate you, and I will miss you, and, you know, I am sure that you'll be having some good updates as far as the extra time you have.
Yes.
You will be nice.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'm looking forward to the care and feeding instructions for Ron Zern.
Yes.
Oh, by the way, the, the text message when I said roomie, and Shelley didn't understand.
Shelley was all concerned.
I was calling her my roomie, and you were like.
We're roommates. Oh, okay. This isn't going to come out well on video. Ron, I'm really worried.
Well, yeah, so, all right, well, it's a pleasure.
A lot of raised eyebrows in the, eyebrows in the crowd. So, so Deb, the relationship between a board and a superintendent is very unique, right? And I, I ask all of you to look in the news, maybe starting in 2016, but certainly starting in 2020, as the world endured a pandemic and now a lot of the divisiveness that you see, and it's often played out in school board meetings, right? Across our country. And, you know, I've, I've been very forthright saying, "I would never do this job if I didn't have this type of board behind me", right? I, I would never want to be in a place that didn't want me. And you often see literally battles in board meetings between the superintendent and board. So when I, when I think of what an ideal board member is, what, what characteristics they have, the first thing I want to be challenged, right? I don't want just people to nod their heads and say yes. Oftentimes, this audience sees yes votes, but what you don't see are the conversations that happen behind closed doors, the conversations that happen on telephones, the conversations that happen in committee meetings. And so, what I've always appreciated about you, Deb, and we've had more than one conversation where we didn't necessarily agree, but I always felt like I emerged a better person in, in questioning what we do as a school and what I do as a, as a leader, but what we do as a district for the betterment of kids. I'll also say, everybody has a bad day in their job, right? I have bad days, all of us have bad days, and in education, sometimes those can be pronounced. And Deb, if you don't know, Deb works at Prairie State in the field of higher education, and Deb has bad days too, right? And on occasion, we've had these conversations, and I always remember Deb going back to this. She says, "I do what I do because of these kids. I do what I do because of these kids." So we can all have really bad days, and sometimes I think, "What the heck am I doing?". And then I think about 1,900 kids in this community who, you know, we get to watch them for a short period of their life, but then you see the impact that you've had. And so for 16 years, your guidance in working with the kids in this community through your leadership on the board has been really, really invaluable. And I guess the last thing I would say, the word that resonated with me, you talked about levity, the word that resonated with me is empathy, right? Like, you always are asking yourself, "What is it like to be in someone else's shoes, to be in their situation?". And all of your actions on the board, I would say this of all the board members, but particularly you, you asked really difficult questions, but it was always from a place of kindness and wanting what's best for kids. So I'll, I'll close by saying what Shelley started with, which is, I can't imagine sitting here and not looking over and seeing you and the conversations we've had over time. So, thank you so much.
Thank you for your very generous comments, and I will miss seeing all of you on the regular as well. But I am also excited to see what a new person will bring to you, and new ways they'll challenge the district and support the district, and it'll be good.
Anyone else have anything you want to say? Okay. So, we're not done. Mel, come on up. No, you do not have to.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to serve great people.
Before we adjourn, we have a few more things. Oh, wait, there's more. And I'm not going to trip.
Yeah, bless the board.
We have flowers for you. Thank you. Hold on. Okay. We have. We're going to do a picture after.
Okay.
We have a plaque that says, "Deb Havikhorst, in recognition of 16 years of outstanding service to the students, staff, and families of Homewood Public School District Number 153." Thank you.
You're welcome.
With a little something for you from the board. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And we will be publicizing that people can apply to fill this vacancy, and so for anybody who may be watching tonight, did you see how much fun we had? You should join us. I'll get you the seat next to Ron. So with that being said, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.